All right, good afternoon, everybody. It is January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two at five P M. And I'll call to order the Free Town Board Selecting Meeting. We will be going into executive session and then returning back into open session. We will be going to executive session for the following two reasons. First, Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of a public body, and the chair so declares, and I do. Acceleric Cycling LLC versus Town of Free Town. Second, Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A six. To consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real estate, the chair so declares, and I do. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of a public body. Without, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zaker?
Yes.
Selectman Grunewald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, we're now executive session. Okay, we're back from executive session, back in open session. So we're gonna jump actually down to agenda item twenty, which is discussion and vote on mask, masking the town buildings for the, and the COVID-nineteen protocols. And we have Public Health Nurse Lori Dismaris here. Would you wanna?
More?
All right, um, did you want me to give like a quick update?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. So, um, total cases so far for the Town of Free Town, uh, one thousand nine hundred fifty-one. There are currently a hundred and ninety-seven active cases, so basically they've tested positive within the last ten days. Uh, the count for the last two weeks, this is per Mass DPH website, two hundred and ninety-two. The percent positivity rate is high at twenty-three point five-five percent. Um, we're not unique, all of Russell County is in about twenty percent, so, um, this whole area is kind of in that, uh, percentage.
Gone up quite a bit in two weeks.
It's, yeah, the last, well, the last report I did was a little while ago. The last report I did was for January third. So total cases for November was one seventy-seven. Total cases for December jumped up to three hundred and seventy-four. And right now for the month of January, we're at, as of today, um, four hundred and three.
Wow.
I did, um, I was on the DPH call webinar that they have every Tuesday from three to four. And the state physician, um, Dr. Catherine Brown was on there and did say, you know, obviously it's only been a couple of days, um, but are seeing the numbers trending down and also whether to do the testing of wastewater and things like that.
Yeah.
They are seeing that go down too, so I guess.
It's charging.
Cost and hope that we're kind of at the peak and things are going down. As far as, um, for the cases in January, as far as age groups, the largest group, uh, was the thirty to forty-nine year olds, which accounted for a hundred and eighteen of the four hundred and three.
Wow.
And then there were a lot of cases, um, of school age children, so that was about a hundred and thirty-eight so far for the month of January. I also did contact, um, Rick Wideras, the superintendent of schools, just to get numbers to see where the school was at. So, so far for the school year, they had six hundred and sixty-five student cases and seventy-four staff cases for a total of seven hundred and thirty-nine.
Sounds like, that's pretty much, that's a lot of the school.
Um, yeah, if you get how many, I think he said, I guess it's, looks like they might have two thousand seven hundred fifty-nine students, so twenty-four percent.
Yeah.
And they have four hundred and fifty staff, so sixteen point five percent of staff.
Interesting.
And you said that that's been, so that's the eighty days, it's from September eighth to, um, current as of today, so you had sent me that.
All right.
And the other thing, I kind of ran some quick reports, um, as far as variants of concern. So not all the specimens are sequenced to see, you know, whether it's Delta, Omicron, and things like that. But of the ones in December, they did sequence ninety-one of them. Sixty-six of them are Delta and twenty-five Omicron, where so far for January, they've only done sixteen, because it does come after. But of those sixteen, fourteen were Omicron and two were Delta, so.
So it's definitely going a lot.
So we're kind of seeing the shift.
Yeah.
There hasn't been a lot of samples so far for January, but that's kind of where, um, where that information, where, you know, where the kind of shifting is.
Probably, yeah, and, you know, Omicron symptoms seem to be, you know, less severe.
Yes, so it does seem that, um, people that I've talked to, the symptoms are less severe, more, you know, mild, like people mostly complain of like runny nose, stuffy nose. Some people might have a fever, it might last for a day or two, and then it's gone. People who are vaccinated and boosted pretty much have mild and little symptoms. Sometimes there is a few people that are, um, unvaccinated and they'll have more symptoms, it's probably lasts, I'm seeing that they might last a little bit longer. I did run, um, so for January, as far as deaths, there were none. As far as hospitalizations, they're not good about putting that in, it's more the information that I have to put in, so obviously I haven't been able to touch base with every case, so. I'd probably say there's probably a small percentage that was hospitalized as opposed to, um, before.
Gotcha.
And they did say on the DPH call too, that hospitalizations were going down also.
Oh, good.
So that was some good news.
Yes, we'll take that.
Yeah, I guess the next part, so, you know, I know George brought this up last meeting where, you know, kind of questions of what your thoughts are on, on a mask mandate, so that would be everyone wearing a mask in the, in town offices. Um, I don't know if you have an opinion on that, or if it, is it, is, do you see this in other communities, you know?
So I, so obviously different communities, uh, you know, probably what some, some have no mask mandate as well, some do. Uh, I think obviously as far as the state, it's recommended, um. I think if you, you know, it's up to the board.
Yeah.
As far as, you know, recommending, um, there aren't as many that require it, um.
So my thought on it really is, if we're gonna, I don't, I think most masks aren't actually useful unless, unless it's the M ninety-five or K, is it M or, I always get it messed up.
Um, N ninety-five.
And if, yeah, well, so if we're gonna, you know, implement it, I'd want to do it, you know, with the right masks, just actually doing something. And then also we'd have to supply those masks, yeah.
You know, everything you still get do it for, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What I was gonna suggest tonight is if you're in town hall and you're an employee and you're in your office, even if your office has someone else in there, typically at least six feet apart, and there are no outsiders in the office, you should not need a mask.
Yeah.
But what I would think might be prudent is if we required people coming in off the street to wear a mask to conduct their business.
Yeah.
Yeah, man, I appreciate that, but then it gets kind of sticky that we're telling, you were telling the person walking through the door, they have to wear a mask, but then they're being greeted by you not wearing a mask.
Well, I think what he's saying is, is you would wear a mask if you, say you're Cheryl, and you, you're in your office and there's, and there's no one, you know, you know, it's a thing that you don't have to wear a mask, but when, at the window when you're.
Yeah, but now you're, you're relying on the fact that that person remembering to put the mask on.
Yeah.
Because you're behind the shield.
Yeah, no, and that's it, that's why, so that's why I'm, I'm leaning more towards strongly recommended. Listen, I shouldn't be putting my personal beliefs out there, but it's, I mean, I'm vaccinated, right, I believe in that, and I can appreciate you decide and, uh, you know, I think if people want to wear a mask, then they wear a mask, but I think that saying strongly recommended at this point, I think that.
I just, I don't know if, I guess, could we, theory, could we make a mask mandate for people who don't work for town, like anyone coming into the town hall? I think, again, I don't know, I think we should, can be, can do that, right?
We could.
Like, is it enforceable, I guess is the question. If someone says no, but they, but they need to go pay their taxes.
Yeah.
You know, you too.
You know, there's certain things that people don't have in, I don't know, people are, you kind of can't ask them like why they're not wearing a mask.
Yeah, and then I, yeah, I guess why, one of my reasons, my, my biggest reasons for this is, is walking into stores and you see people that they say masks are mandatory, right? And then you go into that store and then that person has to all of a sudden become the police, right? And then they're becoming, they're the face of.
Yeah.
Of, of the, the, I, I'm having a hard time putting it into words, I'm sorry, I'm getting myself emotional, I don't know why, I don't know. But, um, you know, they shouldn't have to be the person, the police, to, the authority figure. I think we should just say we strongly recommend you wear a mask.
Yeah, I guess any, any input from folks who work in town hall? You know, they're.
I, I think a strongly recommendation would be, um, would be okay, because, but, and I think most people are doing that now, right, and we see a lot, I've been seeing a lot more masks. People coming in the town hall today have had masks. We have had staff that's been exposed, they're wearing masks. Um, I think it's something at this point, people, um, most people are using, you know, their, how their immune system is. If they're, if they're immune compromised, they're wearing masks, they're protecting themselves. So I think a strongly recommendation for a mask in the town hall is, is good, and we can put those signs up. To mandate it, yeah, we're gonna run into issues with, and how do we, and we don't want that kind of, you know, um, issue, you know, so, um.
So then, in that, in most public places now, I think that's exactly what's happening.
Yeah.
Strongly recommended, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm okay with doing that, but then we need to also figure out, like here, do we have to, you know, the libraries, the council on A J, right? Technically, we're supposed to.
I think we, I think we strong, I mean.
All buildings.
Yeah, strongly.
Strongly recommend.
All town offices.
And do we have masks available if someone doesn't have one and they're going into?
That's actually a very valid point, so like here, there's.
We have here.
Masks there, right, so.
I know that we have some ample supply that we could probably get from the fire department. We just sent some up to the COA from the fire department, so they have them. They have been, um, mandating masks because their vulnerability of their, uh, population that go in that building. So we did send some up to them, um, we see some here, I can check and see what's available for masks, and we can always order some if we need be.
And, yeah, so I guess we, do we, I don't really need to vote on anything here, I think we already are recommending it, I think it's more just putting out signs and maybe making it more, uh, visible that we're strongly recommending it, so.
Yeah, I mean, you might wanna just vote, you know, that that's it, um.
Yeah, I can do that, so I'll, yeah, so I'll entertain a motion that we, um, you know, have strongly encourage and provide masks at all town buildings going forward and for, until further notice.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the, so the protocols here, I see this cool flow chart. Um, I know we voted on, I think you're right, I know you couldn't make it last meeting, or you got here as you were leaving, of course. Uh, but it's, so this is what I think we voted on last week, is it, or has this changed since the one we voted on? I'm trying to remember the specifics.
Yeah, that is new, right, Lori, you just created that flow chart, that's the, that's like the protocol for if you get COVID, how many days you have to quarantine, whatnot, what we voted on last week was to follow the state recommendations for contact tracing, because it would, with all of the cases and not having the staff, it was impossible for Lori to contact trace. So this state has backed off, right, on some of the protocols, so we just said, okay, we're gonna adopt that. And Lori uses her best judgment, if somebody's more vulnerable, she reaches out and keeps track of them, but she has a protocol to that, and she's following the state guidelines.
And does it seem better this week, Lori, or actually last week, within your first week, right, with the, the amount of cases you have to call based on doing it with just immune compromised and the younger?
Yeah, kind of looking at the, and, you know, obviously I've been in touch with the school nurses, so we're not duplicating calls, because obviously school nurses are following up with school age children, giving guidance on, uh, isolation quarantine. So they've actually, um, been in contact with me and letting me know who they're already getting in contact with, so that I'm not following those people.
Okay.
And people do call town hall, and Umberta sends me messages, so I reach back to people who have questions. Um, I got like three questions today, daycare is our big thing, so obviously I'm touching base with them. And Will and I will actually be working on the website, so that way we can have all that up to date and kind of leave people to there with my emails, so that if they have questions and will that, get to a lot of the question, you know, a lot of questions people might have, like what to do, um, for isolation quarantine, and it also has, like, um, what, you know, links to testing, um, we're also gonna put up there the, how to, you know, get your backs, the Q R codes for your phone, so like some of the places that are gonna require that. And also as of tomorrow, each household in Massachusetts can order for at-home tests to be delivered to their house. So we're gonna get that up there too, so we're kind of gonna, we're still working on the website, but to kind of have all those links there along with my emails, so that hopefully you can meet people there. And what I've done for a lot of people too, is I'm following them, is I kind of just will send them, um, like a text with all the information, um, so that's some of what I've done too.
That sounds awesome. So should I go over quickly this, this new policy or kind of the?
Yeah, so that flow chart there is the new, as of, what was it? The new DPH CDC guidance as far as what to do for quarantine and for, um, isolation. So I just kind of put it in a flow chart.
Yeah.
Most people have been kind of calling me and kind of been talking with them as far as what to do, and just kind of put it in a flow chart, it's a little bit easier.
Yeah, no, that makes sense, yeah, so I guess I'll just run through it, makes sense, real quick.
Do you think you can effectively go through it?
Yes, so, yeah, so this is when an employee exhibits COVID-nineteen symptom, symptoms, the first thing, they have to notify their, their supervisor, that's across the board, which makes sense. So now there's three kind of decision trees here, um, so if they're not tested, so if not tested, the employee is to stay home for five days from the onset of symptoms and, um, and until fever free for twenty-four hours and other symptoms have improved, unless a alternative diagnosis is provided by a licensed healthcare provider, makes sense. So now if they, that's if they're not tested, they do go, once they get a test or if they're positive, test is positive, employee must, um, remain home in isolation for at least five days and until fever free for twenty-four hours and no other symptoms are, um, and all symptoms are resolving, sorry. No symptoms and other symptoms are resolving, so it's getting better. Can leave house with strict mask wearing around others for a, um, another five days, six to ten days, return to work, but cannot eat with others. Interesting. And now if they take the test and they're negative, negative employee can return to work when symptoms have improved and they are fever free for twenty-four hours, they may still wear a mask around others if, um, if you're having any symptoms, makes sense. All right, yeah, did I hit, did I?
Yeah, just put in the eating there because of lunches and things.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But it's helpful for us.
Yeah.
As we can get the questions.
So now, I'm, should I vote on this protocol now?
You can, I mean, that's just pretty much the state protocol, right?
Yeah, but I guess I'll, I'll just, if there's any questions, I'd rather vote on it.
Yes.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve this updated protocol.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I kind of stole this from you, Jared, this was under Port Health.
We've seen like one. Laura, thank you.
I'm just creating. All right. Yeah, you good? All right, thank you, Lori, appreciate it. So with that, I will go back up to agenda item three, and this is personnel board, so George, how about it?
Okay. Okay, um, we have, uh, four resignations. Lieutenant Neil LaFleur is resigning from the Health Insurance Advisory Committee. Christie DuFort from the Library Planning Committee. Owen Borges as Cemetery Sexton. And Nathan Gagnier as Call Fire Fighter. And, uh, we have, uh, some appointments to approve. Um, Deborah Petty, George Grunewald, Kent Wilkins, Jeffrey Amro, Margaret French, Alfred Barrows, Bruce Wilbur, Wayne Jay, all to the COA Subcommittee, effective one eighteen twenty-two through six thirty twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
All second.
Wait, I've got two more.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Jeffrey Brum firefighter, Association Representatives to Health Insurance Advisory Committee, effective eleven nine twenty-one through six thirty twenty-two. And lastly, John Rumbug Senior to the Library Planning Committee, effective one eighteen through six thirty twenty-two. Okay.
I'll make that motion.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, next we have, uh, discussion on, uh, who will represent precinct one on the COA Subcommittee? Uh, if, uh, the other precinct one person should become an al, an alternate. Any ideas on that?
With two applicants, Robert Alderson and Paula Charette, both put in for that one spot.
Okay, uh, I mean, I would nominate Bob for that.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, so you wanna make a motion for that?
Yeah, I guess, I don't know why, can we give him, I mean, if that's literally, I think, can we give both of them?
So we created this, this COA Subcommittee with the nine people stating we should have one from this, one from that.
Yeah.
So as they came in, we tried to maneuver them around and put them where they fit, and we ended up with these two from, for precinct one.
Yeah.
So if you put them both on, you would probably just have to alter the creation of the Subcommittee, adding a, a tenth person. What I suggest is maybe you have the alternate.
Yeah.
Yeah, but doing an alternate or something like that, yeah.
That, that makes sense.
How do I, I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't know, either one of these people really have much information to guide myself to say, I should pick this person over that person, right? So it's, I, I think it's fair, you have two, two people willing to volunteer their time.
Right, and I think that, um, I just think that the problem with if you, if we have an even number with the voting, not that that should happen, but.
You know.
That's up to the board, the board can change the Subcommittee, adding a tenth person, or they can have an alternate where this person would vote if there was a tiebreaker, or if there was some kind of, uh, people weren't there, but they certainly can be involved on any.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to me, I like that. All right, so, yeah, so I guess I'll, um, you, I think you proposed Robert Alderson?
Yes.
Yeah, so I guess I'll make that motion with the, uh, also having a alternate for Pamela.
Paula.
Sorry, what is it?
Paula, I think, Charette.
Paula Charette is the alternate.
I'll second motion.
Yeah, I'll make that motion, Jared, second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We.
Let me let us get.
Are contemplating annual quarry checks for union employees. Uh, how did this come up and why?
So, um, these are in all the union contracts that allows the town to do quarry checks. Uh, we've had some incidents where we thought we might want to do quarry checks, but I, I think there should be a policy in place if you're gonna do them. I'm not sure that we need to do them, we, we have great employees, we really do, so this is probably something I would just table at this time.
Uh, how did it happen to come up?
We just had some instances, we were, you know, that it may be applicable, but, um, I don't, like I said, I don't think you can, you don't want to do a quarry check on one individual, right, you need to do it on the whole departments or whole unions. And of course, police, I, I know police does his own quarry checks for the department, and I'm not sure about fire, but they may. But the, the whole, the SLU is not doing the quarry checks, I think the question comes in then, what do you do with the information, right? And I don't think we, we're in the position to make, it won't be beneficial to the town to do all these quarry checks at this point, and then what do we do with the information without putting a policy in place prior to doing something?
So I will table this.
I think so, yes.
That makes sense to me.
Okay. And, uh, the next item, similar.
Well, that one is a little different, because it's also an insurance issue, right? Where we're, this came about with our insurance renewal and talking to them, and that, that's part of the reason why these issues came up, and that, um, everybody that town, that drives a town vehicle, they should have their driving record checked yearly, because they're driving a town vehicle. So the board can do what they like.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions on that. One, so who will be responsible for running the actual record check? Is it, is our third party that like, you know, we, like, is it done through the police, is it done through?
Yeah, I think that, you know, um, I've had to get my own driving record for employment applications, you can go online and get your own, we can ask them to do it.
I feel like you have to pay for it, though, I might be wrong with that.
I don't remember you have to pay for it. You do?
This isn't, this is not.
Lynn, Lynn might know more than me.
I don't know, but this isn't just checking to see if their license is up to date.
No, I guess not, right?
No, it's their driving record.
Driving record, so.
To see if they've gotten.
I mean, it's, it's another one of those things too, then what do you do with that information?
That was my next question. Uh, are you going to take action against an employee if he has two?
I think it may be that you say, oh, I don't, this person maybe not, shouldn't drive our vehicles, not take action against them.
Yeah.
And so maybe we wait till we have a better policy in place, because that's my concern, what do we do with that information, great.
And I think this is a union, uh, issue too.
It's in the union, like we have the, you, you have the authority to do these things.
So it's in, yeah, but we just haven't been doing it.
We have not been doing it.
Is it in the contract that we can do?
Yes.
It is in the contract, okay.
I, I mean, I know, right, it, it probably some, to your point, if you have a person who's, you know, has a terrible driving record on their, on driving the town's vehicles, it can affect how much we pay.
For insurance, right.
So.
But yeah, or if something happens, I mean, I think.
And, and let's try and think positive, glass half full, we're gonna say that all our employees are, you know, perfect driving, like Christopher, you know, it's gonna help us.
Yeah.
So it's not just a negative, it's also positive.
Yeah, no, I think we definitely, I think this is something we should definitely think about, it makes sense, we're just gonna kind of build some more, uh, yeah, build some more on that.
So we'll table that for now?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, need a discussion on the public health nurse's job description, and, uh.
Yeah, I, I reviewed it, so I guess my question on this is what kind of brought?
So what brought this was about is that we have, um, Lori Dismaris is a public health nurse.
Yes.
There is no job description on file for her. Kevin Dismaris, her husband, is now the health agent.
Gotcha.
So we wanted to make sure she did not report directly to him.
Yeah.
Or more, it's more about signing payroll, that that comes to the, the board of health. So it was just a clarification, because there was no job description, I want to make very clear that those lines are respected and that anything that has to do with, uh, uh, public health nurse comes to the board of health.
That makes sense.
And payroll comes to the board of health, or through, I mean, or through the town administration. So just to clarify that and make sure the lines stay there.
I'd like to postpone this to the next meeting, so I can look this over, and I do have a question on this. Uh, when I looked at it earlier, hours per week, four hundred and eighty annually.
Yeah.
Why is that like that, that doesn't make any sense. No one else has, uh, that in their job description. Usually if the heading says hours per week, typically would be whatever it is.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember.
Probably gives you more flexibility if you do it annually versus, um, you know, weekly, like with the pandemic, obviously we have some weeks that she's working more hours than others. It gives you flexibility to do those ebbs and flows as opposed to just ten hours a week, we don't know what the week's gonna bring. Um, and, and we budget annually, so we must budget for those hours, and that's what we budget for, and that gives some flexibility.
Who's going to track four hundred and eighty hours, I mean, that's.
Well, yeah.
Well, we track it within hours, I mean, we, it's, it's through the budgets we're tracking.
I was gonna say, if your budget all of a sudden comes in the negative, it's real simple to know, they tracked, and it actually went over, right?
And the health agent's tracking, and the, and she's, she's keeping track of it, Lori is, I mean, she's.
Okay.
But, I mean.
I guess the only thing, the only reason why, and I respect that you want to look it over, George, is just because of Kevin started his position today, effective today, so, you know, she wants to be able to make sure that this is clear cut for the, so.
We are having a meeting, we're gonna, we talked about having a meeting next week?
Monday.
Monday.
We can vote on that?
You've probably voted on that, if he wants it till Monday, I mean, it's just gonna be a good thing.
No, I just want an explanation, that's all.
Okay.
I mean, I can, we can vote on it, but.
On the hours.
I just didn't understand why we would have something like that, I mean.
I took it off her change of status form, that's how they've always had it over the years, saying four hundred and eighty annually, but we can change the blocks before that.
Yeah, if you want to change something.
Instead of like, you could just say annual hours instead of hours per week.
Yeah, you just, you can literally move away the slash week, you can just put hours, four hundred and eighty hours annually, and then just.
Okay.
Do you want to amend it that way?
Yeah, it just seems strange. Yeah, it just seems strange, I mean, I've, I've never seen that on any other job description ever.
Yeah. I think Debbie's, I think what you're saying makes sense, I, I remember talking about this before, I, just a long time ago.
I think it works out to like eight hours.
I'm trying to think of some other really like clear and obvious reason, it's not coming to me right now. But I think it might be through the ebbs and flows, like where, you know, one week there might not be, may, may not be anything, and then you might be working sixty, seventy hours the next week.
Yeah, I don't wanna limit it on a certain week to that one, yeah, she's all part of it.
Okay.
But if you want more time, we can put it on the next agenda for next week.
You wanna do that, George?
Whatever you guys think, I, you know, it just was strange, I had never seen that type of language.
So, can we just vote on it with the exception that we make the.
Uh, if you wanna vote on the whole thing?
I would just vote on the whole thing, and if we have to fix it, fix it later on if it doesn't make sense, alright?
Yeah.
But definitely, I'd like to get some research on that, just to make sure it hasn't been done like this for no reason forever, so. Alright, so I'll entertain, uh, I guess this is George, so, sorry.
Okay, so, entertain a motion.
Motion made.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see.
Alright. Alright, now it's back to me for regular chorus selectmen, agenda items, so first is approval of minutes from one, three, twenty-two, so I'll entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on, we have the discussion and vote to approve disclosure of financial interest pursuant to exemption B for, how do you pronounce this?
Boepray.
Boepray?
Boepray.
Boepray, electric, LLC to Kentucky miscellaneous electrical work at the police station, Boepray.
So, I'll give you a preface on this, we had some electrical work that went out for bid.
Yes.
They came in with the lowest bid. Al, Alan Boepray is
Boepray.
Is the, um, electrical inspector for the town, or at least one part of the town, does the inspection, I think, on East Freetown.
Okay.
So, there's a conflict of interest there, I touched base with town council, they said as long as this exempt, you know, there's a disclosure of financial interest with exemption is approved by the selectmen and we, you know, um, put on record with the clerk, that you can move forward and award the bid to them because they're the lowest bidder, and it was a sealed bid, you know, thing that went out to bid, um.
Would that be a different inspector, inspect, the inspector's work?
Yes, so, that's always generally, yeah.
We have a second inspector.
Alright, so, perfect, that, that's, I mean, if his lowest bid's lowest bid, as long as the work's getting done and is being done properly, and, I mean, you're not gonna trust the electric inspector, and who are you gonna trust to do the work, right?
Right, but you know, there's the procedure, we have to disclose the fact that he has some financial interest in.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Um, well, he's a town employee, so.
Alright, well, that's okay with me, any, any discussion on this? Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to approve this disclosure of financial interest.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, then this is for the, next is discussion vote toward the bid for miscellaneous electrical work at the police station, so this is the same.
So, now you can go ahead and award the bid to the lowest bidder, which is Boepray.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'll entertain a motion to award this bid to Boepray for the electrical, miscellaneous electrical work at the police station, the bid came in at, I just had it in front of me and I lost it.
Nineteen thousand five hundred and eighty-five.
Nineteen thousand five hundred and eighty-five, so, and that was the lowest bid by about two thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so now, now, discussion of vote to approve the signed contract between Town Freetown and Boepray Electric LLC for miscellaneous electrical work at the police station, so this is just kinda going forward and
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll entertain a motion to approve and sign the contract?
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so I tried following this next one, so the, this is disband the tax, taxation relief committee? So, my understanding is we have this committee, it's never met, right? And so, we don't, everyone agrees we don't need to have this committee, so it's just a vote to disband it, right? I got caught up because there's a couple similarly, or similar named committees, so I was, so is it as simple as that?
I believe so, Luanne's really been on top of this.
Okay.
I think Cheryl, you, you vetted it with Cheryl and Kim.
And Kim.
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't think we need a committee that's never met, so I'll entertain a motion to disband the taxation relief committee.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on, this is the, um, the RFP for the OPM, which is the, the project manager for the Council on Aging Build Project.
Yeah.
So, I went through the RFP, it looks, it looked normal, I mean, I don't, nothing jumped out to me, it's, sure, it's pretty standard, similar process we did for this building?
Correct, and, and, uh, town council vetted it, and we, whatever, whatever changes they recommended, we incorporated.
Awesome.
So, other than changing the dates that, so that when we actually publish it, it, you know, it makes sense, um.
Yeah, that was one thing, I, I said the deadline, I think it was like February, February first?
Yeah, I, so I just told Luanne, we, we just leave the dates until you guys approve it and we're ready to publish it, um, and then I'll go through and change the dates.
Okay, perfect, okay, great, so yeah, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the, approve, what language here, yeah, the RFP for the O, for the OPM for the Council on Aging Building Project.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, moving on, we have the recycled buying policy for the Town of Freetown, so this is pretty much, you know, just for anything we buy, the town itself buys, you know, when it's, whether it's, um, stationary, you know, building, or office supplies, things of that nature. We're trying to have those be more environmentally friendly, recycled products. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, and it's, uh, you know, it's required for one of the grants that, um, I think Vicki got down at the transfer station for.
Great.
So, they, they want a policy in place that tells you like, hey, if you can buy recycled items, then you should, you know.
And it, and there's like, uh, a way, I mean, I guess, is there, so this is the policy, or, let me think about this. They just have to know what to look for, right?
Just a policy, I, I think it might have been in place before, I'm not sure, Luanne might have more information on.
It wasn't a natural written policy.
Oh, no.
Um, so we, by the requirements of the grant, we did have to have a written policy, so.
Perfect.
Um, this has been run by the Board of Health Office and the transfer station who had gotten the grant, and both agreed that this was fine the way it was, and then the memo on the top of it is required as part of the grant to be sent out by the town administrator with the policy to all department heads, or anyone with purchasing power.
Alright, that makes sense, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the recycling, recycled buying policy for the Town of Freetown.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, moving on, purchase of the insurance for the schoolhouse located at five North Main Street, so it looks like we, do we, we did this, but we had the wrong address?
Yes, I said, I listed it as nor, no, South Main Street, but it's North Main Street.
Yeah, I, I do the same thing, I'll, I can't figure out what Main Street, it's by CVS.
Well, I'm next door to where I work, and I wrote the wrong one.
So, what's, so, does that mean that the quote we got was different?
So, the quote is right, I just wrote the wrong, like, I wrote South instead of Main, so you just have to vote that you're insuring five north.
Alright, so, I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase of insurance for the schoolhouse located on five North Main Street in Asona.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, this is a transfer request from the highway department to move nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars from the reserve fund to repairs and maintenance, um, equipment for replacing the sanding unit.
Yeah, the sanding unit was kept, I don't know, he was shooting out flames, something last week.
Okay.
Yeah, caught on fire.
Yeah, yeah, so, he, he needs to buy a new one.
And.
It's another way to deice the roads, I guess, I think.
I guess, yeah, um, so he needs a new one and.
So, this is a request from Chuck?
Yes, this is.
Always fair.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer request from the highway department.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, discussion of vote to approve the revised revolving fund increasing in spending authorization for the boat ramp, the amount of ten thousand dollars. Alright, someone wanna give me a little background on this one? So, it was nine thousand approved at town meeting?
It was nine thousand appro, was approved at town meeting or approved at the selectmen's meeting?
I don't know.
And, and it was, the nine thousand was still gonna be short, uh, so this is actually revising it from nine thousand to ten thousand.
Okay.
Um, just to, to, based on our estimate, estimates of what the boat ramp's gonna cost prior to July one, right? It's just for the months of, pretty much the month of June, and I know Luanne's well versed in this as well.
Yeah.
The month of June, I think, and, and we, we were projecting to be short money, so this should make it so that we'll break even for that before town meeting, before we can move the money and refund it.
It's for the police, I mean, it's police escort.
Police, yeah, police detail and, and, uh, employees, so that, that be known that, because there was obviously a lot of issues last year, so putting the police detail in place definitely seemed to help with a lot of these issues, so the money spent was well worth it.
Yes.
So.
Okay, that works for me. A discussion, alright, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the revised revolving fund increase in spending authorization for the boat ramp, the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, now we have, oh, on the approval of the Patriot Half Triathlon on June eighteenth and the Cranberry Tri-Fest on August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, and the police and fire are on board with this, no issues? And I think this was one that we couldn't have last year because of COVID, but it looks like, uh, a very difficult race to do, um.
We'll sign you up.
Don't think I'm doing it. Alright, uh, I have no issues, any, any discussion on this, any? Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Patriot Half Triathlon on June eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and the Cranberry Tri-Fest on August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So now, I think we're done with the everything, I'm just gonna, uh, we just have a, the public hearing at seven. Yeah, so.
Twenty-three if you wanted to.
I was gonna say, you could skip to twenty-three, which might be some discussion.
Okay. Yeah, so this is, uh, agenda item twenty-three, discussion of vote to not host activities due to high COVID numbers at the Council on Aging until further notice. My question on this is, does that include the food pantry?
No.
No.
The food pantry's a separate entity.
Okay, just making sure that there's no, you know, I don't know.
No, and actually, we discussed till two, February first.
I was gonna say, we had put the date in there, right?
Two, February first, now, I mean, I, if the I, I don't know, I, I, I think that ma, might, might make sense, what kind of activities are you, you being currently having at the Council on Aging?
So, they're having card games, they're having, um, knitting, they're having, uh, pool, they're playing pool, um, book, I think they might be having book club. So, it's just the activities, that they're not closing this Council on Aging building, and they've already been mandating masks pretty much for inside the building. But with given the high COVID, um, the board had concerns, that being said, I heard from some of the board members, they didn't have a meeting and vote, they are doing that tomorrow, so your approval would be.
Can I wait till they?
You wanna wait, or you're just subject to them ratifying it, because I think they've already, yes, started this.
Yeah, because we're seeing February first, we're seeing through February first, by the time it comes back, we'll see.
We're, we're, we're having a meeting on Monday.
Yeah, so then that's already the twenty-fifth or whatever, right, so that would mean that's only in place for six days.
The twenty-fifth or the twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth, sorry, twenty-fourth.
Yeah, I think that you see the, what Lori said, the, the numbers are starting to come down, I think we're in the peak of COVID, right? It's gonna start to calm down, um, we haven't had a breakout in the COA, it isn't like it's long ramp into the COA. People are wearing masks there, um, it's up to the board, but this is, their board ha- has strongly voiced this, that this is what they wanna do, and there are other COAs that are closed down. I will tell you that some groups, they still want to gather, they're looking for other venues to meet.
Yeah.
I know that's what.
But I was thinking like, yeah.
What if you limit it to vaccinated seniors?
But do you have the right to ask?
That seems like, yeah, how, how are we gonna enforce that? I mean, I guess you could do, you could have them.
But you can enforce it by asking for that.
That's why I think it should be a very limited window, a couple of weeks, let this little.
Alright, yeah, so I, I think we just, if the, if their board's gonna go that way anyways, right?
Yeah, their board, I'm pretty sure they're gonna vote that.
So, we'll vote on it, and, uh, you know, subject to the, to their boards, vote tomorrow.
Yeah. Or you could just defer to them, right, in other words, defer this limited decision to their board.
Yeah.
So, what?
That's why, why even need, do we even need to vote on this, though, really? Because if they, if their board makes that decision?
Yes, because you guys have a real ultimate authority on what happens.
And then, what about from, you know, one month?
I would say we'll defer it.
Till Feb, at February first, we don't have a meeting, so then that would mean that they would have to be able to allow stuff to happen again until our next meeting, right, until after February first, so we would have, I say we could, uh, put it in there that we'll allow Debbie to be able to make the decision until the next meeting, so that there, for whatever that stopgap is in between, right? So, it's five days in between February first and our next.
I think you allow it for two weeks, I, I'm concerned about allowing it too much longer, I'm just gonna tell you my personal opinion, and I had a lengthy conversation with Lori today, she had another commitment, so she couldn't stay longer today, but she would have told you, the concern is the seniors, if you don't allow them to have a safe place to go, because the, the, most people are masked there and it is safe, they, they, they're done with being cooped up, so then they're gonna go to places that maybe aren't as safe as the COA, where they'll have more chance of exposure, so, um, I'm just putting that out there, and we're seeing that, right, with, with one of the activities calling us, saying, hey, we, we wanna, we still wanna do our thing, where can we go? And they're ultimately gonna come here, so, I think that you pose it for the two weeks, you let this peak of, cause there is COVID everywhere, you can't say there isn't. Um, and then you, you know, you defer to their board for the next two weeks, but I.
So, that's really what we're voting on, just deferring, deferring this decision to their board.
Right, for the next two, two, February first.
That's fair.
Until, until February first.
And I think I actually have a meeting with them on that date, I think we already scheduled it when I was on Zoom with them.
Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion to, um, defer to the Council on Agents Board decision to, uh, to hold, host activities for the, until February first.
Motion made.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
Wanna go to recess?
Yeah, so. Go into a quick recess, and we'll come back and have the public hearing. Do I need to put, do I need to vote on recess, I always forget?
You probably should just put.
Yeah, so, I'll entertain a motion to go into recess?
Motion made.
George, do you have a second?
Motion to go under recess.
Do I need?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Welcome back, I'll, I guess I'll entertain a motion to return to open session from recess?
Motion made.
Second. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We lost George, by the way, he had to leave, so it's just gonna be Jared and I going forward, um, so, we have a public hearing scheduled for seven PM. So, I was told to read this notice, so, Town of Freetown Public Notice, notice hereby given that application has been filed for alcoholic beverage retail license, wine and malt beverages for Neon Beverages LLC from thirty, thirty-three, thirty-six Innovation Way, Freetown, Massachusetts, oh-two-seven-oh-two. Um, a public hearing to consider the above matter will be held today, Tuesday, January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at seven PM at the Freetown, uh, Police Station Community Room, fifteen Memorial Drive, East Freetown, Mass, oh-two-seven-one-seven. We are now, um, in public, in the, sorry, uh, public hearing. Do I have to, I, I, do I have to open, vote to open a public hearing, okay, I do? I do?
Yeah.
So, I'll entertain a motion to open public hearing?
Motion made.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Welcome, please, uh, just say your name for the minutes and.
Absolutely, uh, thank you very much, Attorney Tom Killarney, I represent the applicant Neon Beverage LLC. I have law offices at Forver, excuse me, in Forver, Massachusetts, and with me is Jennifer Kostick, who is the, uh, general manager, I'm sorry, district manager for Neon Beverage LLC, will be the onsite manager, uh, for the store, um, that's before you this evening.
Great.
So, a, as you stated in the, um, reading of the, uh, of the notice, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, we're here before you tonight for a, um, malt beverage and wine liquor license, uh, for the property at thirty-three, thirty-six Innovation Way, Freetown, Massachusetts. This is currently a building that's under construction, I'm not sure if anybody's been by.
Yeah.
I have.
I'm by.
Just in the future.
Yep.
In terms of its location, um, it's on Innovation Way, obviously, it's right in front of the, uh, Amazon Shipping Warehouse.
Yes.
Um, and other than that, there's not a lot around it other than off-ramps, on-ramps, highways, and roadways. Um, and other than that, there's not a lot around it, other than off-ramps, on-ramps, highways and roadways. Um, we did submit, uh, this evening to Ms. Souza, uh, an affidavit of, uh, service of notice upon the abutters, as well as publication. Um, and included a certified copy of the abutters list, along with all the green cards, uh, for the certified mailings that were sent out, and a copy of the tear sheet for the publication. Uh, I would suggest to the board that the application itself is in order, but obviously, if there's anything or any specific questions that the board has, we'd be happy to answer that, or if there's any oversight that's in our application, we'll make sure and that we're, we're able to address that. In terms of the store itself, um, it's a, it's a hybrid, uh, gas station convenience store. Um, calling it a convenience store, I think is doing this a bit of a disservice, uh, currently, there's one of these, uh, very similar types of, uh, stores that's under construction and close to opening in Seekonk, Massachusetts.
I think that one's already open.
I'm sorry?
Is that one already open?
There is, um, one in Middletown in Jennifer, uh.
Yes, last, it it did open, last one, it's great.
Oh, I, I called that one, I drove by last, it wasn't open, okay, so, so it is open, um, I would s- certainly suggest to the board that it's a fairly impressive store, um.
Yes.
Not your typical convenience store, they have a lot of fresh food, fresh fruit products in there, uh, for sale. Uh, this one will be a little bit different in that there will be a Dunkin' Donuts also located, um, at this site. Uh, we're here before the board, obviously, looking for a beer and wine license. Uh, this store is being proposed as operated twenty-four hours a day, we understand that we can't sell beer and wine twenty-four hours per day.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, under Massachusetts laws, and I know they would recently modified, um, allows for Sunday alcohol sales from ten AM to eleven PM. Um, that's what we've asked for on this license, and in terms of the Monday through Saturday hours of operation on the liquor license, we'd ask for eight AM, which is eleven, to eleven PM.
Okay.
Um, in terms of when the store will be open, Jennifer, can you come back here?
May, May timeframe?
So we're looking at some time this spring, uh, hopefully before the summer, uh, it's, will be open and operational. Uh, we think the store itself will be a real asset to the community, I know when we went before the planning board to the site plan review process, they were, um, fairly anxious to have a place like this in town. Uh, not, certainly not gonna call it a truck stop, and we represented that it was not a truck stop, but as I understand, there's usually a place needed in town for, uh. Vehicles, large trucks to go take a rest, uh, get something to eat, and I think this site is certainly gonna provide that to the community.
Yeah, I went actually on the website and checked out some of the other locations, and they look beautiful, so, yeah, and we're both, we're both actually in the industry, I I work for Gulf Oil, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then Jared also.
Yeah, I work for a supply company, so, um. So, yeah, so I I did go by, that's how I knew the Seekonk location was open, so, uh, I went by and checked it out, so, um. One of my things is, is the, you know, hours of operations, I would say that they would have to be in line, in my opinion, with our existing licenses, right, so I don't.
Yeah.
I have to see what. What the licenses look like for the other establishments in town, I I would hate to say that we're restricting them to a certain point and then allowing them to be able to offer for further hours, so.
I definitely have tried to go. Get beers at Juniors and it's been closed, so.
Yeah.
I don't know what those places.
I I I think in Massachusetts, until just ver- very recently, um, the hours of operation on a Sunday, I believe, didn't start until twelve PM. And I think they ended at six PM, um.
Never really made sense to me, it's kind of a interesting.
Well, if you if you can remember back, it it wasn't that long ago when they didn't allow alcohol, alcohol sales at all, on Sunday.
Ah, on Sunday, yeah.
And those go back to the old Blue Lawns, um, but obviously, I I, I would like to think that Massachusetts is getting with the times a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, so my, my guess is, is that probably a lot of the stores, um, in town probably have the old hours, especially on a Sunday. Uh, I can't say that definitively, but I think this change was recently made within, i- if, if not twenty twenty-one, just in the turn of the new year.
Yeah.
We have, um, the hours for grandpas and juniors that you guys just did are Monday through Saturday, nine to nine, Sunday, ten to eleven.
Some.
That's interesting, we keep Sunday, ten to eleven, that must have been a typo on that part, which obviously we approved it, but interesting to see we're gonna allow Sunday to eleven, and the other days to nine.
Sunday to eleven PM, the other days to nine, that's, that makes no sense.
Yeah, that's something, something else, a little wacky with that.
Yeah, I I think if, if of all the days, we'd rather stay open, the other days till, till eleven PM and.
Juniors is eight AM to eleven.
Yeah.
Yeah, grandpas was the nine to nine, juniors is ten AM to eleven.
Eleven PM?
Yeah, Monday through Saturday, Sunday, ten to eleven.
Okay. Yeah.
Wait, Monday, Monday through Saturday till what time?
Let me pull it up, but, Monday through Saturday, eight AM to eleven PM, Sunday, ten AM to eleven.
That's what we approved for our juniors?
That's juniors. And then grandpas. Grandpas is Monday through Saturday, nine AM to nine PM, Sundays, ten to eleven PM.
That's interesting, those don't line up, but, uh, yeah, I mean, I think juniors would be.
I think they close earlier.
Yeah, they probably find them an issue.
Well, juniors closes at nine, so that's why I'm surprised that we approved the license till after nine o'clock.
Which, I mean, to me, it's fine, but, I mean, I don't know.
So I mean, if, it it sounds like ten to eleven, then every day of the week.
Yeah.
It is, is what it sounded like for, I figured, one, I think juniors.
Yeah.
And then we'd be, we'd be fine with that.
Alright. Alright, any, any other questions?
Just in terms of Ms. Kostik, um, before coming on board with Neon, she worked at Wawa down in Florida.
Yeah.
For a good seventeen, eighteen years or so.
They're the gold standard.
Yeah.
Yeah, so she's been involved in in these types of, uh, stores for many, many years, been involved in alcohol sales for many years, she's TIP certified. Um, and she's certainly, at least initially, uh, gonna be on the site forty hours per week.
Alright.
Like you.
So this is your, this is gonna be Neon's, what, the third and fourth locat- or this, fourth location?
Uh, will be the fifth.
Fifth?